Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the Township Committee, April 17th, 2023. The notice requirements provided for in the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice of this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Sun, and then two of your times at my posting at the Middletown Township Municipal Building, and filing with the Township Clerk, all on January 5th, 2023. Miniman Clark.
Here.
Miniman Kratz.
Here.
Miniman Setimbrino.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Here.
Mayor Perry.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in one nation, one God.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor the troops serving worldwide defending our constitutions, freedoms, and way of life. Thank you. Our first item on tonight's agenda, we have the administration of oath of office. Our first promotion to Deputy Chief of Police, Lieutenant John Warner. I'd like to invite you to the front of the room with your family.
Good evening, everybody. We're obviously today, we're all here for a lot of very special, incredibly special occasions. Very honored by our mom and family from Santiago, and honored that he was able to join us here today. I wouldn't say that he's still French when he's down, but I know, McKee's still following him around, so I know he's good. But, but Mr. Prosecutor, having here with us, and thank you very much for your service. Just want to first say thank you to Mayor, Frank Warner, and Detective. People are policing 20 years ago, and doing what they do. Our officers, now it's more and more, and they deliver each other. Taking higher, raising the bar, making it, it is a testament to the good work that Middletown is doing. I want to say thank you very much. Gracious in my 15, last six months, and collaboration on, it's a joyful day. I'm celebrating each of the officers who have been promoted.
Where do you stand?
I said where do you want to stand.
Oh, stand right there.
Right hand.
Yes.
Left hand on the Bible.
I, John Warner.
I, John Warner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of Deputy Police Chief.
Of Deputy Police Chief.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Deputy Chief, congratulations.
Our next item, we have promotions to police lieutenant. At this time, I'd like to invite Brian Dilworth to please come forward with your family.
Left, left hand on the Bible. Wait for everybody to come. Double Z, it's not my fault.
I, Brian Dilworth.
I, Brian Dilworth.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
And to the governments established.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of lieutenant.
Of lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
This is where it goes up?
Yep.
I get out of the way so we can take pictures. Hey, Maggie, you're gonna take our picture.
Next, I'd like to invite Donald Coats to please come forward with your family.
I, Donald Coats.
I, Donald Coats.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of lieutenant.
Of lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I, Donald Coats.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of lieutenant.
Of lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
This is where it goes up?
Yep. I get out of the way so we can take pictures. Thank you.
Thank you.
He did the right thing.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna stand for a picture. Hey.
Thank you so much. Hey, Maggie, you're gonna take our picture.
I, Michael Heaton.
I, Michael Heaton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority.
And I do swear.
Do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
The duties.
Of sergeant.
Of sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Did you get him? You hit him? All right. This is where it goes up?
Yep. I get out of the way so we can take pictures. Thank you. Thank you.
I, Joshua Midos.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the government, and to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
I do swear.
To faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of sergeant.
Of sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Frank.
I, Joshua Midos.
I, Joshua Midos.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.[1283.16]
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of Sergeant.
Of Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Thank you.
All right, let's give another round of applause for our police department. You know, we're certainly appreciative, obviously, that our prosecutor is here and so many of the men and women, not only of our police department, but their family members, who are an equal part to be that being a police officer, being in that fight each and every day. We're so grateful to each and every one of you, husbands, wives, children, mothers, fathers, everyone in between. We just couldn't be more grateful. Grateful to live in such a great town and a police department, so dedicated to the protection of the 68,000 people that call Middletown home. So on behalf of myself and the entire Township Committee, we thank you, we thank you, we thank you so very much. In my, in my five years as mayor and six years on the governing body, we've been incredibly fortunate to have steady leadership, leadership of the largest police department in our county. And that's led by one of the most honorable individuals that I've ever had the privilege of working with in our chief, Craig Weber. Chief, thank you very much for your leadership.
Thank you. It's been said that promotion is not in lieu of doing your job or reward for doing your job, but rather an indication of demonstrated ability to do even more. Each of the officers promoted tonight. And to be respectful of every time, I'm not going to read their individual biographies, but the sheer crowd here tonight is a testament to what they've achieved and contributed to the organization during their careers. It's a very challenging time of policing, as the prosecutor alluded to. I can honestly say we have never had a more educated, highly-trained cadre of leadership in the department. I think we're very well positioned to meet the challenges we're facing. I have full confidence, each one of these officers, to lead the department into the future. And I know how the character integrity do what is necessary. So congratulations on the very well-deserved promotions tonight. And lastly, I would like to thank the mayor, the deputy mayor, the governing body, and the township administration for their diehard commitment and support to the department. Without the cooperation, nothing will be possible. So we're totally grateful for that, too. Thank you so much.
All right. Heidi, ready to go? One more presentation. Bear with us, it's another good one.
We have a presentation now recognizing Middletown South, nine U and 12 U travel basketball teams for winning 2023 Mid-Mammoth Championships. At this time, I'd like to invite the nine U and 12 U teams and coaches, along with their, with the program trustee, to join Mayor Perry at the front of the room.
So, so if I can just have your quick attention. So, you know, ever since we, we moved into this building, I felt like we've been on a real win streak here in a lot of sports all across Middletown. And I'm so proud to, for the second year in a row, right? Yep. Second year in a row, have the nine U and 12 U travel basketball, Middletown South travel basketball teams undefeated for another season. Is that right, guys? All right, let's give it up for us, undefeated season. Before, before I go any farther, I'm going to let Ron come up real quick and give a, give a brief, a brief overview of this unbelievable undefeated season.
I know, first and foremost, certainly a treat to experience the promotion of police officers. And what a better experience for these young boys and a better example for them to set. You guys are part of the community. This is a representation of the youth of the community. We go out there and we compete in Mammoth County against a lot of our rival towns. And nothing more prouder, couldn't be prouder of these boys this year and everything they accomplished. You know, anybody can play the game, not everybody can be a champion. And certainly to be an undefeated champion in the sport of basketball is a tremendous accomplishment. Thank you, Mayor Perry, and the Town Council for recognizing us again. And hopefully, we can make this a regular occurrence. But this is about the coaches and the boys, so.
Well, to, to all the coaches, first and foremost, thank you. To all the parents, thank you. Because this is a great lesson for, for these young men to, to experience, not only their, their success, but what they've learned throughout a season. And I know they're undefeated. They were undefeated last year, undefeated this year. But that success only becomes harder because now you're the top dogs, right? So everybody's looking at beating you. But I got a feeling with all the success that we've been able to celebrate these last two years, we're going to be right back here again next year, am I right? All right. So on behalf of the governing body, we're presenting you, and Ron's got all of your, your certificates. But this is presented to the Middletown South nine U, 12 U travel basketball team on winning the 2023 Mid-Mammoth Basketball Championship League and finishing with a perfect season. Thanks to your dedication, hard work, you're able to remain undefeated and win 16 back-to-back victories. And in addition to making Middletown very proud, you've also inspired the younger players in your program by being a great role model. So we wish you lots of luck on and off the court into next season. Guys, congratulations. All right, we are going to get restarted. So if you are departing, we ask that you just take those conversations out into the hallway, please. All right, Heidi, let's do this.
Okay, continuing on with our agenda, we have some proclamations for the record. A proclamation recognizing April 23rd through the 29th.
Heidi, hang on one second.
Could you please close the doorway?
Yeah. Very grateful to former Mayor Fiori for acting as the bouncer for the evening. Thank you, Sergeant at Arms. Sergeant of Arms. I'll swear you in right now. All right, Heidi, go ahead.
Okay, we have a proclamation recognizing April 23rd through 29th, 2023, as National Library Week in the Township of Middletown. We have a proclamation recognizing April 30th through May 6th, 2023, as National Municipal Clerks Week in the Township of Middletown. And a proclamation recognizing April 30th through May 6th, 2023, as National Small Business Week in the Township of Middletown. And a proclamation recognizing April 22nd, 2023, as Earth Day in the Township of Middletown. Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have approval of minutes for the March 20th, 2023 regular meeting and the April 3rd, 2023 workshop meeting.
Motion to approve. Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes. At this time, we have a public hearing of proposed ordinance 2023-3368, an ordinance authorizing entry of new lease agreement with the Middletown Township Cultural Arts Council Incorporated, a nonprofit corporation for township-owned property and improvements located upon Block 809, Lot 26, 36 Church Street.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2023-3368? Don, come on up.
Thank you, sir. Coming back for more. Good evening, my name's Don Watson, living at 1 Collison Drive. Glad to see that you're chart, not charging, but negotiating this fee for the Arts Council, for the use of the Arts Center. Glad to see that we're increasing that amount because of the profitability of this nonprofit. I was wondering about Maggie O'Brien. Is she a township employee?
Yes.
She is, even though she's the head of the Arts Council?
She's not the head of the Arts Council. She works, she works for our Recreation Department. She receives a stipend from the Arts Council, but her, her salary is paid by the Township of Middletown.
Right. Okay, I was looking on the Arts Center's website, and it has her listed as.
She's a trustee on the council. There's a president, just like every other nonprofit organization. She's a trustee, but.
Right.
She, she is a township employee and receives a stipend from the council.
Okay, very good. Well, I wish them continued success in the future going forward. I'm glad to see that some of the programs are turning profits. I was wondering, I saw a sign outside the Reform Church that we're running daycare at the Reform Church, is that?
They're utilizing that as a, basically as an annex, given the construction that's occurring in the basement and some of the areas of the Arts Council, Arts Center. So while those are being redone, while that construction is happening, they're utilizing that space.
Okay, I was wondering if there was, whether the rooms were full at the Arts Center, or, you know, when this was overflow, or if something else like you suggested.
While the construction's happening.
Yeah, and what, are they making more rooms or something down there?
Well, there, there was unfortunately, because of some NJ Transit work that was being done on the creek that runs right through there.
Right.
Right next to it, we experienced some flooding in our basement. So right now, we're, we're taking that opportunity to redo the basement areas, all the classroom spaces in the, in the basement, as well as some other items, punchless items that need to happen throughout.
Like waterproof in the walls and stuff?
I'm sure they are.
Yeah. I did that in my house one year, when water started seeping through the foundation.
I feel you. It's a big. They're also putting in some new drainage, so that it doesn't happen again.
Oh, good. Outside, around the outside? Oh, cool. So they got jackhammer floors and electric stuff. Right. Very good, okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Don. Any other member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance 2023-3368? Seeing no other member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt ordinance on second and final reading. At this time, we have introduction of proposed ordinances. Our first ordinance, 2023-3369, an ordinance establishing registry for businesses and rental properties within the Township of Middletown.
Motion introduce.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held May 1st, 2023. Our next ordinance for introduction, we have 2023-33070, an ordinance authorizing and accepting deed of permanent roadway easement upon Block 1072, Lot 37.01, the Acme Road.
Absolutely making a motion to approve, introduce this ordinance.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held May 1st, 2023. At this time, we have our municipal budget. The resolution is 23-130, a resolution authorizing introduction of the 2023 municipal operating budget. At this time, we have our chief financial officer, Colleen Lapp, with a presentation.
Thank you, Heidi. Just waiting. All right, there we go. So I'm here to just briefly discuss the municipal budget that's being introduced this evening. So on our first slide here, it's just a pie graph that I do every year to show us the, the different sections of the budget. I categorize it by cost centers. So as would be expected, salary and wages are your largest percentage of the budget. Operating expenditures are, are your second. And then it breaks down into smaller portions of things. We go into a little bit more detail. You know, you have things like our debt service, our pensions, that all go into the budget and end up with where our costs are, which then we work on the revenues and we come up with our tax levies. I have a breakdown of the '22 tax levies only because '23 haven't all been struck yet. So I like to show when every resident pays a dollar of taxes to us. We have to distribute that out to other entities. So for every dollar, 62% of that goes to the school board to support all the schools in town and their activities. 23% stays with municipality, that pays for all of our services, police.
Frank smiled when he saw 62% of them.
And then the county, they get 10%. You know, they, they do a lot here in town as well. And then the, the remainder of the, of the dollar, it goes for the library, open space at both municipal and county levels. Sorry. Okay, so I give a little example here of the change in property tax from '22 to '23. So our levy is increasing by $2,846,608, our proposed tax rate, because as I've explained this in the past, because we're on the demonstration program with our assessments, as market values rise, it impacts our tax rate. So although the levy is increasing, the tax rate is decreasing to .403. That's our estimate currently. Our values are not finalized yet, so that may fluctuate by the time we strike the levy, which is usually sometime in the beginning of July. I mean, strike the rate from the levy. So that's a, that's a decrease, as I've said, of .026 on the proposed tax rate. So what I do each year is I ask our assessor to give me the value of the average residential home in the town. So you'll see up here, I have two different values. $529,800, $529,800, it was our average residential home in 2022. And in 2023, the average residential home is $592,700. So what I do next is I apply those tax rates to show you what the average residential home in town would pay for municipal services. And the change year over year from '22 to '23 is expected to be somewhere around $96. That's in the annual amount, in your monthly amount, it's an increase of about $8 per month. The next slide I'm going to show you are some of the larger cost drivers for the 2023 budget. What I showed was what we actually spent in 2022 and what we're budgeting in 2023. The, the increase on the end is not going to mathematically line up because I'm showing you what the budget increases. And the reason for that is sometimes in our spent of the prior year, you can see some fluctuations, which drives the cost for this year. So I wanted to demonstrate that. In our general liability line, that's strictly based on the assessment that we're given from our insurance fund. So, you know, as things have been going, liability insurances, especially when it comes to cyber coverages, have greatly increased, and therefore, we're seeing that in some of the amounts that we're paying. Solid waste and recycling, this is the other expenses for that division. We had to go out for bid last year, so we're seeing the impact of that increase in that contract on that line. I did the next two together because they're both the pensions. One is police and one is for the rest of the public employees. Those pensions increased this year. The police pension increased by $345,000. The public employees increased by $183,000. And our health insurance, that went up $1,135,000. And obviously, that, you know, is a large increase. But that's, again, there's things we've been seeing in health insurance. It's not unknown that there's been larger increases out there. And that's what our cost has increased this year. The asterisk next to the health insurance, I just wanted to explain. Although our actual spend for 2022 is $8,880,000, we also, because we're self-insured for health insurance, we maintain reserves. And in 2022, we had to spend a significant amount from those reserves. So that's where part of our increase for 2023 is coming from, is that our claims were, were increased last year in 2022. And then the final is our police salary and wage, that's up by about $451,000.
Colleen, two questions.
Mm-hmm.
Health insurance. We, as you mentioned, we are self-insured.
We, a- as you mentioned, we are self-insured.
Yes.
Had we been under the state health benefits plan, what percent, what pers- what's the delta between our percent increase versus what the state health benefits plan is increasing?
So overall, our health insurance budgetarily on the budget line is going up about ten percent this year. Um, across the board for the state health benefits, their increase was twenty-four percent. So we have a
Twenty-five, almost twenty-five percent?
Right, so the difference, that our, our increase on a twenty-five percent would have been a hundred and fifty percent greater than this.
And then for the police, is this, is this a large increase due to staffing because of the body cam?
Yeah, we had to, we had to greatly increase both sworn and civilian, um, staffing for, because of the body worn camera, um, requests that we're starting to see, but we anticipate are going to become increasingly demanding on our staff. What we've tried to do is take a shot in the dark. Um, we've tried to increase the staff as much as we think we responsibly can, but.
Does anyone can now Oprah a, a body camera footage?
Anybody.
Okay.
I, I, it's, it's one of those costs that I'm not sure.
I'm, I'm looking down now at Heidi because she knows about the incredible amount of Oprah requests we receive that are for engineering firms, for real estate agents, and now add lawyers to that list, basically.
We've already heard about other towns where lawyers are filing a blanket Oprah request for every single body worn camera footage. They then review them if they see something they think they can make an issue over. They, the attorneys will then reach out to the victim, um, or the person in, in the, in the video and try to get them to hire them, sort of like, you know, personal injury attorneys chase cars, car, car accidents. So unfortunately, it's becoming part of the system and we end up having to pay for it.
There's a new thing for you, Brian. All right, thank you, Colleen.
You're welcome. My last slide is my energy tax receipt slide. I update this every year.
The honorary Tony Fiori.
I'll put that in parentheses. Um, since two thousand and one, uh, we've been underfunded according to the formula for what we should have received for our energy tax receipts. At one point, energy tax receipts were all collected locally. The state decided it was easier on the utility companies if they collected it and then redistributed those funds to us. The problem is they don't quite redistribute them at the level that they should be. So since two thousand and one, the amount the township has been underfunded totals seventy-six thousand, seventy-six million, five hundred forty-five thousand, nine hundred ninety-six dollars. That is larger than the entire twenty twenty-three tax levy. So if we got, if we have received these funds over the years, it's just that much less that we would have had to increase our tax levy. I do have to say that the state did increase the funding this year and I, I believe we're getting, um.
Fifty percent.
We, we, we are getting, uh, thirty-three thousand more this year, twenty-three thousand more this year. Yeah.
Weird because I read press releases and it says fifty percent.
Uh, no, we went from.
Three thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, throw that in the reserve, see what happens. Another seventy-six million. Let me do the quick math on that. All right.
And that's the end of the slideshow. I don't know if there's any questions.
You're here all week. Thank you, Colleen. Any questions for Colleen? All right, uh, Colleen, I, I want to thank, I do want to thank you. I want to thank your staff. I want to thank Tony and Jim and everybody that takes part in these are long meetings that we sit for hours and hours on. And, uh, it, it's certainly appreciated that I know, I mean, the meetings that Rick and I sit in on and then compared to the meetings that you, you all do with, uh, our department heads. So, um, thank you once again.
Thank you.
All right, um. Heidi, you need a motion today? Motion to approve twenty-three dash one, I'm sorry.
No.
No, no.
We're approving the introduction, yeah. So it's okay, you can approve it.
Okay. Thank you, Heidi. Motion to approve twenty-three dash one, three, zero.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve twenty-three dash one, three, zero for introduction. At this time, we have twenty-three dash one, three, one, a resolution to read budget by title.
Motion to approve. Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt twenty-three dash one, three, one. At this time, we have the consent agenda, which includes resolutions twenty-three dash one, thirty-two through twenty-three dash one, forty-one.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman, Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt consent agenda.
All right, Township Committee comments. Committeeman Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, uh, I'd like to echo your sentiments to, uh, our CFO and her team. Um, it's not easy to, uh, to come up with all that data that you pulled out and put into, I don't know, seven slides, right? That's, that's years upon years of, of knowledge and, um, and you and your team did a great job. So thank you. We really, really appreciate that. Um, to all of our officers that got promoted today, um, it's, it's awesome. It's awesome that, uh, we get the opportunity to promote from within with such a great amount of talent. Um, as Chief Weber said, uh, we've got leadership from every level, uh, to make our department great. So, um, with that, I applaud all of them. And then our, uh, basketball team, it sounds like, uh, might have some future NBA stars. So it'd be kind of cool to see them someday up here. Congratulations to them as well. That's it.
Thank you. Committeewoman Kratz.
So now that Committeeman Clark stole everything, um, I also would just like to just briefly thank all of our officers for all of their hard work and congratulate all of them. And also again, Colleen, to her, to her and her team too, for all of your hard work and efforts, truly appreciated. Um, and that's good for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Sedambrino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll echo the sentiments of, um, both our committee members with regard to the police promotions and the, um, the basketball teams. Um, and, uh, one thing I noticed about the basketball teams, that the nine U were, were shorter members. So that they had to, they had to have great strategy. And the twelve U were pretty tall for their, for their age, so we'll give them the hype. But, uh, sixteen victories is, uh, is a fantastic record. Um, and the only other thing that I'll note is, uh, is I do want to pass along, um, my greatest compliments to, um, Colleen with regard to the budget. Uh, thank you very much, uh, in presenting a great budget for the township and for us to review. Um, and when I asked Colleen early on, I had said, how many slides did you have? She said she had six and I said, no, you had five, plus the, um, former Mayor Fiori energy tax receipts. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
It's just a couple of things. Uh, I just want to give a shout out to John Ross, uh, Ross Gruing. Uh, the mayor and I got to go visit, uh, him and his, uh, new business on Friday. Uh, down at Co-op, uh, pretty amazing when, uh, you know, three years ago, we started talking to John and his plans and his ideas. And, uh, just to see it actually come together. Five years, I'll start by, okay. Five years, I was wrong, but just to see something, a, a project like that come together and, uh, he had everything against him and just to be able to conquer it and get it through. And now, uh, everyone's telling me there's a, a line every day down there. So, uh, good job, John. Um, our officers, obviously we got the best in the business here, so, uh, congratulations again. And, uh, Colleen and team, uh, fabulous job. I know we're going to squeeze it all and you do some good squeezing here, right? So thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. I'll open it up for public comment. Any member of the public with, no, I'm going to defer. I've spoken enough.
This has never happened before.
I'll open it up for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment, they do so, I'm okay. Do I have a fever? No. Uh, just step right up to the microphone, just state your name and address for the record. Uh, we ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or four minutes. I'll let you know that you have one minute remaining. Uh, yes.
Good evening.
Hello.
Uh, my name is Margaret Moreau, reside at one thirteen Pelican Road. I've been a resident there for thirty.
He's going to fix your mic real quick.
Thank you. I've been a resident there for thirty-five years and I have an acre of land and I live on three quarters of it and the other quarter is totally undermined by the brook. I've been dealing with Mr. Ted Maloney, Ian Ambers for many years, especially Mr. Ted Maloney. I've had drones on the property, I've had engineers, I've had the property with ribbons on it. I've had crews down there. And as we can see in the township, we have massive flash floods now. So around the culvert on my property, it is so bad that the concrete has come down, has fallen in front of the culvert and now the water is going around and undermining my driveway. So as I said, uh, if you look at my folder, my folder is about this thick. And they keep telling me I'm coming in the spring, the summer, the winter, the fall, nothing happens.
You, you said you're on Pelican?
Pelican Road, one thirteen.
But Tony, are those, are those drainage easements? Yeah, so I'm not, I'm, when you say that it's, I, I am assuming you're saying it's on, on capital is what you're trying to say, on our capital plan, but that wouldn't be because we don't, we don't have drainage easements on private property.
You have a culvert on my property and you have a culvert on One Crawford Road, which is Mrs. Landers' property. And the brook flows.
Is there an easement on your property?
What would that?
A township owned easement on your property?
Yes.
Because there, there, you may think that this is unique to you, but it is not. So I just want to make sure that what you're saying is accurate because I, I, this is, this, I, I know this issue and I don't believe that, that those easements, that the town has easements in, in your neighborhood. Because this isn't the first I've heard of this.
No, this has been going on.
You have, you have, you have a stream, you have a stream in the back of your house.
Yes, that turns into a rapids, like flash floods.
But that's not owned by the township, that's owned by, that's, that's your property, not the township's property.
Well, the water that comes down is from the water from the roads that causes the floods. So we were told in the past that you have an easement and if it's a little babbling brook and there's an easement of five feet on each side, you can, you, they claim you can control it. If now that we have flash floods and it's taking away trees, undermining hundred feet trees, undermining our property. Um, as I said in the past, Ted Maloney has been at the house several times. If you look and you research, I have, um, engineer, everybody that's come. T and M was supposed to come down, they were supposed to put retaining walls, they were supposed to put gabbing cages. Nothing happens.
At whose expense though?
I'm sorry?
At whose expense?
At the township's expense.
But why would the town pay for something that's on your private property?
Because the water is in the brook that when it comes to the highest levels, it erodes our property. We have no control over it. So what happened was when people started building houses on Red Hill Road and the terrain started to change and they were putting asphalt in, cutting down the trees, then the water started to change. Now we have massive trees that are in the brook and that's diverting into all of our property. I've been taking care of the property for thirty-five years. I'm tired of doing it. I do it myself. I go in the brook, I remove the wood.
But you have to understand what I'm saying is that the township would not maintain property that it, it, that isn't ours.
Well, the pro- well, the township on Borden and Pelican, a person that moved in that was there for six months, went down and complained and they put a one million dollar retaining wall there. So why would they do that across the street from me and not do mine?
I, I, I don't know about either.
It was on a corner. Okay, so when the water is flowing and it's at its highest level, it cannot go through the culvert. So what it does is it churns like a chimney, uh, like a washing machine. So now I have the two concrete walls that are down. The water is going around the concrete, the concrete is in front of the culvert.
Just so you know, we, but there are residents all over that have, that have this exact situation on, on their property. I can, I'm thinking of one myself that I'm very familiar with and they paid to maintain that, not the township.
Well, the township is the one that put in the concrete walls. The township is the one that put in hundreds of concrete bags and they're all gone. The township has done.
I, I don't, I, I'm unaware of that, so, you know, I, I can't really, I, I'm not going to comment on something that, I, I don't know that. But what I'm saying is if we don't have an easement on your property, then it's yours to maintain, not, not the townships.
Okay, so now since the township put in the concrete walls and now the concrete walls are down and now the water's going underneath and eroding underneath the property, uh, you put the concrete.
I'm, I'm going to have to look into this more because I, I don't understand what, what you mean by we put in hundreds of concrete walls.
No, we put in hundreds of concrete bags to try to control the flow of the water that is going into the culvert. But now because we're getting flash floods, it is higher than the line.
You're not getting flash floods.
We are getting, I have, we have videos of it. I have videos of flash floods.
The sediment is going up. So now there's less and less room for that, for that water to go. That's what's happening is that after time, dirt, rocks, sand, all go into that, into that, those, these streams. So that's why you're seeing an increase in your water flow is because the, the sediment is building up. Now the water doesn't have as much room to go down and flow through your culvert.
Right, but with the problem is just the concrete.
I'm not an engineer, but I know, I, I mean, I understand basic like water routes.
You come to the property and you see the massive concrete that is laying in front of it.
Okay, well, I will ask, I'm going to, I'll sit down with Ted and I'll talk to him about this with Tony.
And just to Ian Amber also.
I'll, and I'll speak to Ian.
Right.
Okay, and, and Amy Rose will give you her card and her contact information.
Because, I mean, it's going on two years now, we still have the barricades up, we still have the landslides, we have the kids that.
There's a question as to whether or not this is township property and I think that's first and foremost what I need to figure out.
Okay.
All right?
All right. Well, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
It's a disaster. And this is Mrs. Landers.
My name is Ronnie Lander. I have lived here for fifty-three years. Fifty-two years I have been complaining about Parise Brook and all of the undermining that it has done. I've moved my fence, which I put up when my children were little. I have moved it three times closer and closer because we keep losing land. It keeps going down. Now my fence is at the very edge. It is thirty to fifty feet down, straight. And I wish you would all come down and take a look at it. Because this has been going on, I have sent letters here for years and they keep promising they're going to take care of it. And it was called an easement for the township. This is, uh, Parise Brook, uh, the property before we bought it, we were the first owners of the house. It was an Applebrook property and they moved the, the dirt so that they could have better units, areas to sell, to build houses. And Mother Nature has put the brook back where it was originally.
Ma'am, can I just have the property address?
One Crawford Road. I'm on the corner of Pelican and Crawford. We are across the street from each other. We have, they have put a larger culvert in than was originally there. They've poured cement down the slope in an effort to hold it, which has all gone. I have personally planted trees, weeping willows, ground cover.
Who put those, who, who put that in?
The township.
Oh, I, I understand.
If, if you come to my property at one thirteen, this is my house.
I, I, you, you can always speak, you can always speak one at a time, so, so you can continue, ma'am.
I don't know what to do anymore. I'm, at this point, I mean, I came here when my children were, were tiny children. My son is going to have his son graduate from college now. So I put in a fight for many years over this and I have had a lot of promises. So I've put in a fight for many years over this and I have had a lot of promises, I've had a lot of letters back and forth and I have had nothing that was constructive done. You've got T and M, which is engineering firm, they should have found a way to do this. And if it was done fifty-two years ago, it would have been so much less money and it would have been done, it could have been landscaped. Nothing has been done that has been positive or professional. And I don't, I don't know where to go at this point. The next thing I have to do is move my fence once again because now all of my children are grown, I have a dog that I want to protect. And she, not that she digs under the fence, but the fence is here and that's the slope.
Let me, let me work, work with Tony and Ted and let, let me look at this a little bit more.
Yes, you can speak to Ian, I gave him a-
I'll talk to Ian.
Okay.
I'll talk to Ian. Amy Rose will give you her, her contact information so that we can remain connected, all right? All right, thank you both very much. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Yes, Melanie?
Hi, Melanie Elmeyer, forty-three Green Tree Terrace in Lynncroft. Since the Lynncroft Village Green Association was founded in nineteen ninety-nine, its members have advocated for roadway improvements such as traffic calming, safer vehicular circulation, crash reduction, and pedestrian safety with a focus on the Route 520 corridor as it intersects the downtown village of Lynncroft. For the past twenty-three years, the LBGA, Middletown Township, and Monmouth County officials have maintained the opinion that the first step to any significant safety improvements to downtown Lynncroft is the construction of the now-famous Two Way Acme Road. And your introduction tonight of the ordinance to accept the roadway easement deed for that road unanimously is a major accomplishment, a long-awaited and wished-for improvement that we hope will be a catalyst for revitalization with proper planning. So I want to thank you on behalf of the Lynncroft Village Green Association, first for your tenacity and for listening and for all your hard work and it's with much appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Thanks for your fight. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Al, come on. You can rock papers to the support.
Vince Moran, thirty-nine, Bravant, Leonardo. I called your office on the thirtieth of last month, okay? And I still did not receive a phone call from you. You're probably busy with your job, oh, I understand that, okay? The reason I called was they cut so many trees down in there by the skate park, they took out a big buffer zone. I could sit there and I can see every light in there. Without the foliage before, you can't see them, you only see a shadow when the foliage is there. Now I can actually see them by sitting there and looking at daylight. They took out so many trees, it was, it's pathetic. That was the reason that I called. I don't know why they did that. And it was Flynn that took them out and Flynn works for the town. Reason? Any reason why?
I, I don't know personally why they took them out, I would assume a lot of them were dead.
It was, it was part of the skate park project, there were, there were too many trees that were close to the park that would, you know, dropping things on the park, so it was basically thinning out of the trees, so it was part of the skateboard park design.
Okay, yeah, but if it was good enough for a hockey rink to be there, but it's not good enough for a skate park, well, yeah, we know that, we know that, okay? But I'm just saying, a lot of them, I'm sorry-
The other thing is though, maintenance, because they're, they're dropping leaves, they're doing, they're dropping sap, whatever.
Oh, I understand that, but what I'm trying to say is that you just took out a buffer zone. That's, it, it, to me, it didn't, it didn't seem-
Tony, you're talking, hang on a second, you're talking about a buffer zone that includes a guy who makes Sanford and Son not look like a hoarder's house. Am I right, am I right or am I wrong? Wait a minute, wait a minute, am I right or am I wrong?
Oh, you're right on that one.
Okay, so you're talking about a buffer where you got more metal and aluminum between you and, and this skate park than a rocket to the moon has on it. So like, that's not really a buffer, that, it was just, it was, it's a junkyard and there were trees that were in, overshadowing a park that had to be cut back in order for us to utilize this, this facility properly.
But what, what does that have to do with Sanford and Son?
You're, you're saying that you can, you're saying that you can see the lights, I'm saying you're complaining about the current thing.
Yeah, I see the light, I see the light.
You're complaining about, you're, you're not asking about the, the junkyard that's in between you and the skate park.
Well, I'll tell you what, and I'm going to tell you right there, and he's sitting right there, that man right there, he deserves a raise because he puts his heart and soul into his job-
Which, who are you talking about? Bill?
Bill.
Okay.
He puts his heart and his soul into that job that he does and he takes care of two towns, two, okay? He's always in Leonardo, he's writing summonses up, all right? Whether he gave him summonses, I don't know, that's not for me to know, you know, maybe it is, but right there, two jobs and I see him around town, hi, how are you, bum, bum, bum. And I'll tell you what, he does his job and he does it at a hundred and thirty percent, not a hundred and ten. And I'm not putting him on a pedestal just because he's sitting here, I'm telling you what the man does. If we can get some of the other employees on the road department and the parks department to do half of what he does, man, we got dynamite here. We got dynamite, okay?
Bill, you know where to go tomorrow.
I didn't mean to give you any more work, Bill, I'm sorry.
No, actually, on that, we, we are just doing a survey now, so we, it's hard to tell whose property all that stuff is on because there's so much of it. So we're actually doing a survey so we can delineate where his property ends and we're going to make him move anything that's on our property, he's going to at least have to move off there. It's hard to tell out there now where the property line is, so we're having a survey done right now to figure that out.
Well, from past experience, I'm just, I know what you got to do, okay? Where his building is, this is his building here and here, you were talking over here, that little green spot, it's got six inches. He got six inches, now he's got all his stuff, all his stuff sitting in there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with you, we can figure that out from the photographs.
Right.
To issue him summonses, we're going to need a survey to show exactly where-
Yeah, but I know, I know what you're saying, but I, I was just saying, that's why I want to know why the trees were being cut down and, you know, you gave me the answer, you gave me the answer.
There's, there's, you know, I, I hear you, we'll, we'll, uh-
But I would like to know why you never got, well, never you contacted me, anybody saying, you know, you got a deputy mayor, he could have called me.
You didn't knock on his door? No, I, I-
And you know where I am.
No, I'm just- Amy Rose definitely told me that, that you called and it might have been last-
I mean, I called your office, I didn't call your office, so you know, I understand that, but I'm saying, at least you could have returned a phone call.
I got you, buddy.
All right?
Apologize for that.
Yeah, well, don't let it happen again.
I won't, I won't, don't worry, don't worry.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, you got it. Yeah. Bruce, did you have your hand up or Bill or Don? No, 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 you, I just wanted to make sure that I'm not losing track here. Okay, all right.
Yeah, you all right?
Go ahead, Mark, sorry.
Mark Zabrowski, thirty, Powell Avenue. You brought up the budget thing, I just have a couple of questions. So we're, we have this great budget, right? What are we doing for the roadways and the sidewalks? Because Hillside Avenue, I don't know if any of you have been down Hillside Avenue?
The, the other day, I-
Yeah, did you have a tire when you got off of that road?
I-
So we have to just, my daughter goes to Navisink, she does not get a bus, we live over by Beacon Hill, so we have to walk, we don't have sidewalks, then when we finally do have sidewalks, and we were told we don't get a bus because we have sidewalks, but we don't have sidewalks, so, when we finally do get to the sidewalks-
Are you within two miles of the school?
We are.
That's why you don't get a bus.
That's fine, but when we get to the sidewalks on Hillside, I don't know if anybody's seen those either, they're in need of replacement, okay? You got trees overgrown on them, there's no curb cuts, there's no marked crosswalks, there's no crossing guards either. Then you got Hillside Avenue, which is in complete disrepair, so the, it becomes like an obstacle course of cars going down it. So the last, Thursday and Friday, my wife and I walked our daughter to school because she was off of work and we said, you know what, let's see what this walk is like, I typically drive her. And it is like an obstacle course because you're trying to avoid the bushes while you're going down whatever sidewalks are there and then you have cars going fifty miles an hour down Hillside Avenue trying to avoid all the potholes. So with this massive budget, what are we doing to improve the roads that are in complete-
Massive budget?
Well-
Hang on, hang on, Mark, I'm gonna, because I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you a question.
Yeah.
You're saying massive, tell me what's massive.
Well, the, the property tax levy that-
Tell, tell me-
Our schools are in disrepair, the roads are in disrepair-
Talk about my twenty-three percent, because that, you, you-
What's that?
Talk about my twenty-three percent.
Yeah.
If, if, because if you got a-
Well, and we could go out in the school one, the sixty-three percent for the school and the schools are in disrepair-
I don't have any say over that.
That's not the school. But what is being done for the roadways in that budget?
We don't do roads in the budget, we do roads in capital, not in the budget, municipal budget. So I would have been happy to explain that-
Okay.
But I just want to be clear that this budget doesn't include roads, okay? That's done in capital because you don't pay for roads in hard cash, you pay for them over a period of time by bonding.
Mm-hmm.
All right, that's how that's done.
Okay, so is there any-
We, this, you, we didn't introduce a capital budget today, we introduced municipal operate-
Okay, so then, then I guess the question is, is there any plan to improve the roadway there?
Yes, Hillside is on, is on our list and I have said for two years now that I am going to get Hillside done, it needs to be repaired, it will be repaired, it is on the top of the list because it is absolutely, between that and no kill, I'm getting those two roadways paved.
Okay.
Okay?
Great, thank you.
You got it. Bruce?
Bruce Stafford, thirty-nine, Brain Art, Port Monmouth. I wish Ted was here tonight because most of these things that I'm going to say, probably Ted would have the answer. Two weeks ago at the workshop meeting, we had a fireside chat for probably almost an hour after the meeting. I brought it to his attention that we need a contract with that valve on Wilson Avenue. A while back ago, when he told me that he had a guy or a contractor, he said it was PCS. Nobody seems to know who PCS is, I don't know who that is, but I explained to him that if that valve on Wilson Avenue malfunctions, it needs to be repaired within twelve hours because we have another tide coming in. And Ted knows that over the years, we've had major issues with people being told to take care of that valve when high tide arrives between midnight and six, eight in the morning because nobody wants to go out there. So he said he was going to look into it. Tony, you're my witness, remember the meeting we had on August fifth? You remember that, right? Took three years, took three years for Ted to fix that valve. And I know, last but not least, the last thing that was said in that meeting is you stood up and you looked right at Ted, you said Ted fixed the valve. That was the last thing you said, right?
Sounds like me.
It was you. Tony, you were there also, you was there. It was three years ago, valve's supposed to be fixed now. My concern is, if it is fixed, I still wonder why Ted had that valve opened up on March third.
But, but is, are we going back to the same thing that you asked on the last meeting? Is this the same flooding with the, with the, when you asked about spring mode?
No, no, no.
Okay.
You just want to know that there's, there's a contract in place to make sure the valve is operating properly, is what you're saying.
Yes.
I know, I'll discuss that with Ted.
Oh, you did?
No, I said I will discuss it.
Okay.
He's away right now.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's important, Tony, because if it malfunctions, like I said, we have two tides a day. If it malfunctions, hopefully I'm not the guy to determine it malfunctioning because Ted tells me he's got an app on his phone. The app's supposed to be telling him when there's a problem with that valve. I don't think it's working right because if it was working right, he would have realized that the Department of Environmental Protection opened that slide gate on March fourth, I wouldn't have seen water. That valve that was manually opened by somebody that reports to Ted was opened on March third. It never got put back into the automatic position until March sixth, Monday afternoon.
This is, this is the same, this is, this is what I was just asking about.
Yeah, that's part of it, yeah, that's part of that, you know, but that was my concern when we talked two weeks ago about, we need to have a contract on the valve. We can't, we can't have somebody, whether it's me or someone else, say, hey Ted, the valve's not working. Because if this PCS guy really does exist, he might tell Ted, I got six jobs ahead of you. You know what I'm saying? If we have a maintenance contract on it like we did years back, we had a maintenance contract on it. And I wish Ted was here for this because at the time, and I'm talking about quite a few years ago when we had a problem with the valve, Ted told me, there's only one guy in the country that can fix that valve. I have no reason to kid you, Tony might remember this, I says, really? I said, where's this guy at right now? He said Baltimore. I said Baltimore. And once again, I wouldn't kid you, I told Ted, I says, you make sure, you tell him to bring a cot and a sleeping bag because he just can't make an adjustment on that valve and walk away. And that's what it was at the time, he says he's got to make an adjustment. There's float controls on both sides of the valve, you can't have a guy come from Baltimore and make an adjustment on it and walk away. But that's what happened then.
I got it.
One other thing we discussed, Tony, was curb boxes. And you made mention earlier tonight about sediment buildup of debris in storm drains? We've got quite a few over by me that the opening on the storm drains is a minimum of six inches, entirely too much. There's supposed to be a crossmember in there to keep the debris and the garbage from going down the storm drains. We have people that overflow the recycle cans and the next thing you know, all the cans and bottles are rolling down the street and they're going into the storm drain because there's supposed to be a crossmember there. They did replace some of them. I even donated a crossmember to install on the curb box and they installed it. Ted told me they were going to get more. They get them from Campbell, so I don't know if they're going to go with more curb boxes or if they're going to go with the crossmembers, but years ago we had the same problem and when I went to Public Works, they said, oh, we can't find the bars that go across. So they had to get a welder out there and weld strips of steel in place to keep the debris.
Tony, Tony, ask Ted.
The other thing we discussed was Pews Creek. Now apparently the equipment that was used the last time to clear out Pews Creek to where the slide gates are in the marina, the equipment that we had apparently, they gave it to the mosquito commission.
Well, we have a, we have an agreement with the county on that, it's a shared service agreement.
Okay, because I was out there with Ted one day and I pointed it out to him how all the growth has actually overgrown.
Yeah, it's a, it's a shared service agreement.
We have a, we have a list of sites that the county-
They do it for-
They use a piece of our equipment actually and they go and do that work and every year we have a list of locations, I'm, I'm pretty sure that area is on that list.
What do they call that machine again?
Marshmaster.
Marsh, okay, yeah. Apparently we used to own that?
We, we still own it.
Oh, okay, they turned it over to the mosquito-
We call it to the county in exchange for them doing our progress.
For us.
Okay, it is on the schedule though to do this?
I'll double check, I'm pretty sure.
It's, it's unbelievable.
Because at low tide, if you get chance and you want to see it, there's actually berms of soil-
Oh, I know.
-that are blocking the water flow.
Ted and I have been trying to deal with that for years with DEP, it's impossible.
Okay. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Bruce.
Thank you very much.
Don? Nothing? Any other member of the public? Yeah, yes, Mary.
Hi, I'm Mary Grant, one thirty-five Lindy Lane in Lynncroft. And I actually just have a question, keeping with the theme of trees here, there seems to be a theme about trees.